We'll call the council meeting to order October the 5th at 7:01. I could have the roll call, please.
Councilmember Payne here. Payne, Powers here. Shelton?
Here. I'd like to ask everyone to stand for a moment of silence, a prayer, and remain standing for the flag salute. Barbara, did you want to remind us of this?
Yeah. And if you could keep in your prayers our two young ladies who passed away in the car accident, Josefina Serrano and Cindy Rodriguez. Keep them and their families in your prayers, please.
I pledge allegiance. Thank you.
They probably could have done.
At this time, we'll do agenda approval, additions, annarations. Are there any changes or anything from council?
I have none.
No staff? None? I have one thing, if with your acceptance. We have the Girl Scouts that want to come up and present us with some vital information that's very important. If I could ask you to come up to the podium, please? It's not on the agenda, but they did approach me, and I think it's, when you hear what they have to say, I think you'll all agree that it's very important.
Hello, I'm Mika Alvarez, and this is Ayana and Mercedes, and we are Girl Scouts from Troop 311. We will be holding a bone marrow drive at the Galt- We will be holding a bone marrow drive Saturday, October 16th, at the Rayleigh's Community Center. Seventy percent of thousands of patients with leukemia and other life-threatening diseases do not have matches in their family. They depend on people like you from their community to find a match. It is really easy to get tested. All you need to do is swab the inside of your cheek. So if we can please have the mayor, Randy Shelton, to come up and demonstrate? Good for you.
It's not going to hurt, is it?
Okay, so first, before you get swabbed, there's paperwork you guys have to fill out. It'll take like five to 10 minutes, and, um... Swab first?
Okay.
And then just take out one of the swabs.
Any one of them?
Yeah. Swab the upper side of your cheek in just for 10 seconds.
For that time? And then that goes? The other way?
Off, for a corner of your cheek.
That's it? Very simple. No, it didn't hurt at all. Thank you. Goes in there, pulls it out. Okay, alright. Thank you. Thanks very much. Thank you. Thank you.
Alright, I'm gonna get a little closer to the heart here. This is a picture of six-year-old Simmerit Payne. She has a rare skin disease called epidermiosis bullosa, which causes the skin to become really fragile, and it breaks and tears and causes- and can open the immune system to infections. Little Simmerit has endured more pain in her young life than most people do in a lifetime. Most children with this disease don't live past their first year, but Simmerit is an exception. She loves to cook with her mom and play with friends that don't make her feel different, and play dress-up, and I feel that as a community, it's really important to- It might not be Simmerit that ends up getting a match, but someone just like her could be needing a match, and you could be the match. So I feel it's really important to participate in these kind of events, and I'd just like to again invite you to our donor drive on October 16th at the Rayleigh's Community Center on Twin Cities Road, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
From 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m.
Thank you. I think the last drive we had in our community to do something, do you remember? Share, wasn't it? About six, seven years ago? Okay, alright. Thank you. Now we need to move back because I've already messed up with the start of the agenda item. We need to go to the video statement. Sorry.
This meeting of the Galt City Council is being videotaped in its entirety and will be cable cast without interruption on Metro Cable 14, the Government Affairs Channel, on the Comcast and Shore West Cable Systems. Tonight's meeting can be seen on Channel 14 and will also be webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv this Friday and Saturday mornings at 9:00 a.m. Tonight's meeting can also be seen via live video streaming on the city's website at www.cigalt.ca.us. A VHS copy is also available for checkout from any library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address council should fill out a speaker identification form and give it to the clerk. Please speak into the microphone when addressing council and state your name for the record.
Well, we've already did the other two items. Public comment?
Under Government Code, Section 54954.3, members of the audience may address council on any item of interest to the public or on any agenda item before or during consideration of the item. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the city clerk prior to addressing the council. We request that you state whether you live within the Galt city limits or the county area. A maximum of five minutes is allowed for each speaker. All the speaker sheets I have are for a certain item, the assembly, the ordinance. I don't have anybody under public comment, but I believe Clarence, did you want to speak under public comment? Okay, why don't you come on up?
This deal with the public meeting and conference, it says you are cordially invited to attend a meeting of the blind, visually impaired, and handicapped people who are interested in forming a chapter of the California Council of the Blind and Handicapped in Galt. On October the 9th, 2010, at First Baptist Church Fellowship Hall at 653 A Street, Gulf, California, from 10:30 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. We will have guest speakers Jeff Stone, President of California Council of the Blind, Frank Welch, Director of Advocacy and Governmental Affairs, Wanda Jenkins, Spanish translator, Barbara Payne, City Council Vice Mayor of Galt, and anyone else who would like to speak. We ask for your support in this endeavor. I have another thing here. It says, "I am here on behalf of the handicapped and the Galt community. I ask for your support in appointing me as an advisory to the council on issues we feel are a risk to our safety while on the streets and sidewalks in Galt. I am and will always be disabled myself because of the work-related accident, and I am visually impaired, and I thank you."
Thank you.
John Spatterback?
John Spatterback, 11th day to Galt. It doesn't seem to do me any good to make a comment, but I have to make a comment about the comment I got last week about I asked why we wasn't more transparent. There's more in common. This city has more in common with the city of Galt than just four letters in its spelling. I'd like to see things transparent, and what I got was the attorney said that it's a legal entity. I know it's a legal entity. Barbara Payne said I could check in the office for information. I know I can check in the office, and I can also look on the website and bring up the information. But I think that the public needs to be well aware of what goes on in the city. And your answers didn't get me anything, because what I asked for was why we weren't transparent. As I said, I know that the redevelopment agency is a legal entity. A redevelopment agency also accumulates funds by freezing property tax base within a project area that has been blighted, designated as blighted, but the property tax base frozen all the affected taxing entities that receive property tax, schools, parks, police departments, special districts, continue to receive the same share of property tax that they received in the year when the redevelopment plan took effect. In Galt, that was in '81. The redevelopment agency must share a percentage of this money with the other taxing entities. But we just spent a half a million dollars here of redevelopment funds on a parking lot here on C Street. Now, I think it was a good idea, but do we want to take money from these other entities and put money into a private parking lot? I think it was great. It looks great. Also, we spent over a half a million, over a million dollars on a development, the senior project there on Fourth Street. That's not redevelopment, that's development. And do we really want to use our money that could be used for these other entities? You know, to take the money away there and put it on these? I think we need to be more open with what we do, and that's what I was trying to get at last time. There's so many things over the years. I used to complain about the developers not paying their share of impact fees for some of these impacts they create. What I got was I was told that we can't tax, make them pay for what- But I wasn't asking for that. All I was asking for is that they pay their fair share. I wouldn't ask them for them to pay anything extra. The last thing that we did in this city, and there's a list of things I've got, but the last thing was the $465,000 that we transferred from the CIR fund into the developers' impact fund. That was done on the off night. There was no camera. And now I go back to look on the website to bring it up, and it's even been deleted. The information isn't there. So I really think you need to be more transparent. Maybe somebody can answer some of these questions for me, because I'm not very happy.
Thank you, John.
Chris Stier?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Chris Stier. I am the president of Galt FC Soccer Club. I wanted to address the board. As you guys know, on March 2nd, during your council meeting, it was brought up to charge youth activities to pay for the lighting that they use. I know when it was discussed, Vice Mayor Payne and others had mentioned that they were a little skeptical about charging the groups and had also asked if any of these groups were contacted about their input of the use of lights. The answer to that was no. I'm here today to ask two things. Number one, I'd like to see that the city council revisit this idea of charging youth activities for the lights, and I would like to see them put it on the agenda for next meeting so that some of these youth sports can come in and discuss this with the council. The other thing that I'd like to see is until this meeting, I would strongly request that you guys consider suspending the charges for the lights for youth sports. I really can't speak for a lot of the other sports because I don't know how much lights they use. I can't say as far as, I can speak to you as far as youth soccer goes. Right now, Galt FC currently has 150 kids that are playing competitive soccer. County Line Youth Soccer has 75 kids that are playing competitive soccer and have approximately 800 kids that are playing recreational soccer right now. This is likely the biggest sport that Galt has in the city. Combined right now, Galt FC and County Line have about 150 kids that are using Veterans Field. The rest of the kids are all scattered amongst the schools. With the daylight savings kicking in, with the evenings getting shorter, it's harder and harder for these kids, these teams, to find places to practice. Hence, about 150 kids are using the Veterans Field, and we're using it after dark. All we were asking for was about hour and a half to two hours a night, totaling about six to eight hours a week. We don't play at night on the weekends. That was all the lights that we use. Something that I wanted to kind of point out was, these 150 kids have 300 parents who are all taxpayers of the city. What was brought to my attention was the community park over at Corealian and Walnut has lights that are on from dark till about 10 o'clock at night. These lights are being funded by the taxpayers. Nobody's paying for them other than the taxpayers because it's considered a public park. There's 26 lights that cover five tennis courts. That's exactly how many lights there are at Veterans Field. And one of the towers at Veterans Field doesn't work, so we actually are only using 21 lights. I think the issue at hand is with our youth groups, we're trying to do what we can to reduce the cost for the kids and the parents. In doing this, we're doing a lot of fundraising. We do pizza parties, roundtable, Papa's Pizza, lampposts. We have shares cards that we do through Save More, car washes at Rayleigh's, Save More, Rite Aid, fundraiser dinners. All these draw in parents. It draws people in. They come in and they spend money in the city of Galt. They spend their tax money here in the city. Also, during the weekends, we bring competitive teams in that are paying for gas. They're buying food. They're spending their money in the city, and it's not just people from the city, as well as the ones that are actually coming in, the local kids that are playing during the day, that are getting breakfast, lunch, dinner, stopping for coffee, filling up on gas. We're talking about 1,000 kids that are playing soccer. Once again, about 2,000 parents that are taxpayers here in the city. A lot more that are using the, are wanting to use facilities than just the park. I think overall, if you were to actually crunch numbers, I think you would see that these taxpayers are investing a lot more into the financial end of the city than the city is really paying out for the lights. Like I said before, we're struggling with the daylight hours. People are having to either not practice or they're getting pushed off to other places. Just to finish it up, I urge you to suspend the cost of the lights for youth soccer as it was voted on March 2nd. I do understand the concept of being reimbursed for the lights, especially for these sports that are using excessive lights.
Thank you for your comments. Your time's up. Thank you.
Just a second more. I think this is very important. It really actually, two lines.
Okay.
Like I said, I just would like you to please look at this not being a cost burden on the city, but actually a investment into the Galt youth, because I guarantee you won't be disappointed in it. Thank you.
Thank you. And as you're walking away, maybe Jason, you could get with him and do a follow, if you would. I'll talk to you about it. You and I can meet. How about that? Okay? Okay. Alright. So, next item, information consent calendar. Liz, if I can get you to read off those four items, please.
Sure. Number one, approval of the minutes of September 28th, 2010. Number two, approval of the city of Galt warrants. Number three, approval of the treasurer's report for the period ending August 2010. And number four, appointment to the city's county Solid Waste Advisory Committee to fill the remaining term through October 31st, 2010, and to fill another full term ending October 31st, 2012, appointing Dolores Martinez, Administrative Analysis, from the Public Works Department.
Any comment from council? If not, I'll ask for motion.
Move to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second it.
Can second it? Any further discussion? None? That was a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Powers?
Aye.
Mayor Shelton?
Aye. Next item?
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Galt adopting Chapter 5.60 of the Galt Municipal Code regarding Assembly Halls.
Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. Before I delve into the specifics of the ordinance that is before you this evening for your consideration, I want to talk just briefly about licensing ordinances generally. And the ordinance before you this evening is an example of a licensing ordinance. And when you go into state law, there's actually two specific statutes which give the city the authority to license for revenue and regulation every kind of lawful business transacted in the city. It's rare that you find such a very clear and all-encompassing statement in state law. And that is a quote, "Every kind of lawful business transacted in the city." And that's found in the government code as well as in the Business and Professions Code. And when you look at the history behind those two statutes, this authority granted to cities dates back to 1883. And in 1939, the Supreme Court held that the validity of the city's power to regulate and license businesses was well settled. And this is an area of the law that has continued to be well settled over the last 70 years. It is a very widely encompassed power. It includes all types of occupations or means by which a person earns a livelihood, with few exceptions. The exceptions are probably in three areas. One is where state law has preempted the city's authority. And the best example of that would be in the area of the sale of alcoholic beverages, where the state issues licenses for alcoholic beverage sales. So that's an example of preemption. The second limitation is an ordinance that would interfere with interstate commerce. And then the last primary limitation are for those businesses that have First Amendment protection. And the best example of that type of business would probably be adult entertainment businesses which have First Amendment protection. When you examine the municipal codes of the cities up and down the state, you'll find all kinds of examples of licensing statutes. They'll range from regulating driving schools to horseshoeing, massage pilers, boarding houses, restaurants, kennels, live entertainment, dance halls, bingo parlors, pawnbrokers, taxi cabs, tow trucks, pool halls, card rooms, miniature golf, amusement arcades, food vending vehicles, tattoo parlors, and probably about 100 other types of business. The reason that they are so diverse is because these types of ordinances are typically enacted by communities to address items of concern within their local community. So there's not a lot of similarity between what's regulated in one community as opposed to another community. Most of the examples that I just referenced are in fact not regulated in the city of Galt, but about half of those are actually regulated in the city of Sacramento. The reason I wanted to review these is regardless of what you decide on the ordinance before you this evening to license the assembly halls, and whether you adopt it or provide direction of staff to modify it, I wanted it to be clear that you unequivocally have the authority to license businesses within this community. It is something that has been well-established for over 100 years. We are not forging new legal ground by your consideration of this ordinance this evening. I'd like to talk briefly about the process that we've gone through over the last few weeks in this community. In August, staff brought before the council an ordinance which at that time was crafted as a special events ordinance and was a major revision of the existing city's special event ordinance. And we received quite a lot of comments, as you may recall, at the August 17th meeting. And there was a lot of good comments made that evening. And that meeting caused the city to take a step back to examine those comments and to see if we could craft an ordinance that more narrowly focused on the concern that the city has without all of the incidental and unintended effects that were discussed at the meeting of August 17th. The council also formed a subcommittee on that evening, and the council's subcommittee met with various members of the community and a series of meetings on September 2nd. We received additional information from members of the community on that date. I believe we distributed a revised draft on that date. After the meetings on September 2nd, we again revised the ordinance and sent out yet another revised draft of what's before you this evening on September 13th. When that draft went out, we extended an offer to engage in further discussions with members of the community, and we did not receive any requests for follow-up meetings from any member of the community. We did receive a few comments from an attorney representing the Estrelita Ballroom this past Friday. I have spoken to that attorney on several occasions between Friday and today, and we in fact did make a few additional amendments to that ordinance after your packet went out. That revised ordinance has been distributed to you this evening. Copies of it are also available at the end of this table for members of the audience, and I'm going to go over those changes with you later in this presentation. So in summary, as it relates to the process, since the introduction of this ordinance in August, we have tried to make this an open process to engage the community and to present to you this evening a draft of an ordinance that addresses many of the concerns that were initially presented. Before I discuss in detail the ordinance that's before you this evening, I'd like to ask the police chief to come forward and talk to you briefly about the justification for the ordinance that is presented for your consideration. And while the chief's coming down, I also want to note that we did also receive comments from a Mr. Garrett Regan of the VIP Event Center, and I believe that was, that letter went directly to the council members.
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, and council. Seems I find myself back in front of everybody again this week after last week. For several years, I haven't been up here as many times as I have in the last couple of weeks, so... But tonight, I'd like to talk to you just briefly about the ordinance that's being proposed and why I believe it's necessary. To me, the answer is simple. To me, the answer is simple. The events that occur at these businesses on a frequent basis need some type of oversight. The oversight is needed to maintain public safety as well as the officer's safety from the police department. Oftentimes, some of these events have the staff that's on duty have patrons that outnumber my staff 20 or 30 to 1. I don't need to remind the council that in the not-so-far-past, one of the events led to a double murder. I'm not blaming any of the business owners for that. They are not responsible for the patrons' behavior. But to believe that there is no need for oversight, I mean, I think that's a pretty blatant, obvious reason why we need some oversight. More recently, teenager at one of the events became intoxicated on drugs, cut himself severely trying to climb a barbed wire fence, ran from the event staff, had the police chasing them around downtown, eventually arrested the teen, took the teen to the hospital, who was still under the influence heavily of drugs, and ended up with Kaiser South, an off-duty police officer, having to help get that person back under control. Again, an example of why we need some oversight at these events. The ordinance is not about demonizing anybody. I'm not blaming anyone for the behavior of the patrons. I'm asking you to take my advice, allow for the PD and the city to have enough regulation over these events to prevent any injuries or deaths. You know, it is my belief that we need some oversight and some regulation, particularly where alcohol and drugs are present. Supporting some level of oversight allows the community some peace of mind. If they, or you, your loved ones, friends, or constituents are injured or killed by someone who leaves one of these events intoxicated, it is not only about what happens inside, but what happens after the event is over. No one is advocating the business need to close or not do business the way they are. There must just be some controls in place to help keep the public and the officers safe. Any questions? That's my call.
Comments?
Okay. Mr. Mayor, before completing staff's presentation, I just want to talk to you briefly about the details of the ordinance that's before you. And to summarize the ordinance in a nutshell, it requires licenses for assembly halls that are rented for private functions of 50 or more people where alcohol is served or consumed. It requires those businesses to provide security guards at a ratio of 1 to 75 guests, to take reasonable steps to control the consumption of alcohol during those events, and to cooperate with the police. To cooperate with the police by providing notice of events, by allowing access to the events, and by closing down events that get out of hand. That's the summary of the ordinance that's before you. What it requires in more detail is that the owner of an assembly hall with an occupancy of greater than 50 people that wants to lease the hall is required to get an annual permit, one permit a year. There's no fee for this permit, and there are many exemptions to this requirement. First, there's an exemption for religious organizations that have halls if they are utilizing the halls in connection with religious events by their members, such as weddings or funerals. There's an exemption for halls where alcoholic beverages are going to be prohibited. There's an exemption for halls that have a conditional use permit as an auditorium. There's an exemption for halls that have an ABC license. There's an exemption for halls that are open to the public. The application process has been trimmed down considerably since the last ordinance that was before you. There are just a few items of information that are being requested. The timeline is the application would be submitted 60 days before the owner of the facility desires to hold their first event. The action by the chief of police is required within a period of 30 days. The grounds for the denial of a permit are basically if there's been a history of problems at the facility. If they've not been in compliance with an existing permit, if there's been significant health-safety concerns at the facility, they would have to, those grounds would have to be articulated as reasons for denial. Any history that a hall has had up to this point in time, prior to the date of the adoption of this ordinance, doesn't count. So if the ordinance is passed within the next couple of meetings, and there's an application that comes forward, it's not going to be denied because of situations that occurred prior to the adoption of this ordinance. In the event that a permit is issued, there are some conditions that will be imposed on the license. Basically, access, allowing access of the police department to the events, the requirement for security guards, which I mentioned, the requirement for notice, the requirement to take reasonable steps relating to the control of the consumption of alcoholic beverages, and to cooperate with the police department. If someone has denied a permit, or they are not satisfied with the conditions that are imposed on the permit, they have two levels of appeal. They first can appeal to the city manager. If they are not satisfied at that level, they can appeal to the city council. There is a provision in this ordinance that allows for the suspension or revocation of a license if there is a history of problems. In the event that there is such a history, the police chief needs to address those problems first with the licensee. If they're not resolved, he can recommend to the city council that the license be revoked or suspended. That decision rests with the city council. So as you can see, we really have delivered for your consideration this evening an ordinance that is much more narrowly tailored. We have tried to alleviate a lot of the burdens that were expressed at the meeting of August 17th, in particular by making this an annual license, not an event-based license that does not have a fee associated with it. As it relates to the changes in the ordinance which I distributed this evening, there's a few clerical cleanup changes. I think, but the two key changes that I want to call to your attention and to the members of the audience are, on page 4 of the draft, in section 5.60.070, under grounds for denial, a sentence was added that says, "An application for an assembly hall license may not be denied based upon facts or events occurring prior to the adoption of this chapter." This was added because of a concern expressed by the attorney for the Estrelita Ballroom. The next comment that I want to take into, or call to your attention is in section 090. It starts on the bottom of page 4, continues up to page 5. Sentence added is that "The police chief shall take into consideration the economic impacts of any conditions on the licensee and consider reasonable alternatives proposed by the licensee." The reason this sentence was added is because there was concern about the fact that the police chief is given the discretion to add appropriate conditions to any license in addition to the ones required in this ordinance. So we tried to add some parameters on this power, but I want to remind the council that even if the chief were to add a condition that the licensee is not satisfied with, they do in fact have the ability to appeal that condition to the manager and then to the council. And I think with those two changes, the rest of the items are fairly benign and are just cleanups, and I'd be happy to respond to any questions you may ask.
Counsel, do you have any questions? I know that we do have some speakers.
I'd like to hear the speakers myself.
Steve Holman.
Hi. My name is Steve Holman. I'm in the, actually, I live on the line of the city limit, so I'm really close to the city. I'd like to start with what I like about it. And that's it. Okay. Now I want to start with what I really don't like about it, which is the whole thing. You know, I've worked with small businesses for about 38, 40 years, and it seems they're constantly being bombarded with ordinances, laws, rules, which take not only the time but money. These guys, they don't have access to public funds, to taxes, to, well, let's say, have halls like Galt City has, Shabola Center, Littleton Center, that they can rent. They can use the police chief and his officers for security, yet this is under the premise of to protect and serve and the welfare of the inhabitants. Why can't a business in Galt use an off-duty policeman? I would assume that they would know the individuals in this community that they should be aware of or leary of. That makes no sense to me. I don't see a lot of common sense in here. What I see is an ordinance that has been fine-tuned to pick on five or six, and I call it pick on because I really do believe it's being, they're being picked on. The ordinance made more sense before August 17th, when you included people who had parties at their homes, if the intent truly was what is stated in it. I'm not going to, I don't have the time to read it, but if it was the true intent, then it makes sense. People have parties in their homes seven days a week. They can have 50, 75 people. They take up parking on the full street. They're, they cause noise, they, dogs barking all over the place. That's a nuisance. Not only that, they get in their cars and they drive. And yet, we say, "Well, that's okay because there's too many of those type of people. They're going to come down here and they're going to, they're going to have a line out the door," people speaking about how you're taking away their rights, their property rights, and their freedoms. And I'm just standing here saying, "I think you're doing the same thing to these businesses." Couple of things. I'm watching the clock, everybody. The security guard issue is a big deal with me. I just don't understand why they can't use, when I grew up, I grew up in a very small community, 3,000 people. It grew to 10. It's, you know, it's much larger now, but the police was always an effective part, played a role in the, within the community. I read through, and I thought it was really well-done, actually. In doing the research for this, I went to the website and pulled up the City of Galt Police Department Strategy Plan Update for 2010. And I would like to read this. This is the only place I found businesses mentioned. "The department views itself as responsible for the protection of the constitutional rights," I'll underline that, "and the maintenance of safety and security for all residences, businesses, and visitors in the community." That's the only place businesses is referenced. I just don't for the life of me understand why we need to have an ordinance when we haven't tried anything else first. Has there ever been an outreach to any of the businesses in the community by the police chief or the force, say, "Hey, come on, let's get together here. Let's do a quarterly thing. Let's have a meeting. Let's talk about what's going on in our world so that you can better protect yourselves and be prepared should any of these things occur." Instead, we want to do an ordinance. It just doesn't, it makes no common sense to me. I think, to be honest, the city attorney made my point for me in that we have literally thousands of laws and ordinances up and down the valley, all over California. It hasn't stopped anything. People are still driving drunk. There's still DUIs. There's still people fighting in backyards and causing issues. An ordinance isn't the solution. It's really working within the community and getting the business involved and working with the police chief, this council, and that's all we really have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
John Hinke.
Good evening. I'm John Hinke. I'm very happy to see that your effort in changing some of the things that have really concerned me with my attorney. I appreciate that. But as I spoke on my vote to him, I told him that I do not approve of the fact that you can tell me who I can hire. I do think that some private, some people that are of knowledge and go spend a class, it's only $400 to have one guy approved for what you're asking for. And I don't mind the $400, and I don't mind having those kind of people working for me. And I'm going to have to train my own staff. That's not a big deal. I don't mind training my people and sending actually whatever it is, eight or nine people I use in that business. I don't mind doing that. But what I don't like is you taking my liberty away from me. You're telling me exactly what I got to do. You're telling me that I got to have so many educated people, and when my staff know my building, they know what's going on. They know how that thing works. If the breaker pops out, if the air conditioner goes down, if anything else goes down, I don't have to be there all the time anymore. I got people trained for that. And you know, if I have one guy for 250 people, and if they go over 250 people, get another guy. You know, I don't care. I'm not saying that. I'm just saying, you know, I think that is a good, and I'll give you an example. I'll give you a real good example that happened last weekend. Alfred was there with us, Ramirez. And we had a young guy that drank some beer the first time. We gave him a warning. That's what we do on the first time we get to a young man that's below the age of 21 drinking beer. And that's standard in my building. The second time, some of my staff gathered him up, and Alfred came to the side of the staff guy. And the kid said, "I'll knock your lights out." And Alfred put his hand on his gun, and he said, "I don't think you should knock his lights out, because I'll have you cuffed and on the ground, and you'll be in jail before 20 minutes is up." And the kid said, "Oh, my goodness." And he walked out, very gently and very nice. So you're right about your, the theory, but you're not, you're not close enough on this ordinance. This ordinance is still going to inhibit my business really bad. It's going to, in fact, it, you know, it's a slap in my face, if you want to know the truth, because I've been running this business for about 36 years. I really have been running it as a hall for about 36 years. I've only run it about 25 years. But I bring promotions in. In fact, I'm bringing some more promotions in that you don't even know about. I have wrestling coming in. It'll be televised. It'll be on TV. I have a two-year contract on that. I think they're abiding with one year with an option. That's some of the promoting stuff that I do, and I've done a good job in that place. And just because I had a couple people that belonged to different associations, one in LA and one in Sacramento, shot each, one guy shot the other, and a guy trying to get out of the way got hit by accident. It isn't my doing, and it isn't really nothing but some things that the chief should be taking care of. And he's tried very hard. I appreciate that fact. Got to get to page 2. Me and my uncle bought this building in 1974. We paid quite a bit of money for it. Six months later, the board had shaken off and it all sandblasted, painted. We had it all done. We were broke, both of us. I said, "Uncle, what are you going to do?" And he says, "I'm going to go to work and make some more money, so my family will have something to eat." And I said, "That sounds like a good idea, Uncle." So we did. That building has never really made me a lot of money, the ballroom, but it's been a real pride and joy. The worst days of my lives were the days I had to cut her up and put her into a pottery building, and horse blanket manufacturing building. And then the people from Canada took all the profits and ran away, and the IRS seized my building. It took six or seven, eight months. $10,000, if you'll understand, back in those days, and didn't know if I was going to be able to handle it all with the payments I had. But I did. I struggled through it all.
Mr. Hinke.
So we had better days. That was in the 80s, when times were really hard.
John, your time's up.
Real good.
Thank you for your comments.
You bet.
Thank you, Mr. Hinke.
Heather Farmer. Heather Farmer.
My name is Heather Farmer. Um, I would just like to point out a couple of facts. For one, we do provide a nice controlled environment for people to hold their celebrations. It's not in their backyard, their front yard. We do staff all our parties, one for every seventy-five people that they have in attendance. I'm not against having licensed security. We already do employ a licensed armed security guard. I was asking to have a mixture of licensed and unlicensed. I feel that we're all pretty close on the same page with the one to seventy-five. I don't think that's an unreasonable asking. I'm just asking if we can cut it back. The way that this ordinance is written right now, it's going to be an eighty-five percent increase in security costs to my clients, which is basically going to cut out a lot of our business. I feel like the utter bottom is a very important core part of Old Town Galt. It's been there since nineteen twenty-nine, and I don't think that an ordinance needs to be passed, but it's, it's inevitably going to shut our doors and cause us to have another There was an exemption for funerals if you have a funeral at, like, a church hall, something that is either rented or leased by a religious association. We hold lots of funerals at our facilities because we can house up to five hundred people seated. There's a lot of congregations in town that cannot do that. Therefore, that being said, if you wanted to serve beer and wine at a funeral, which happens most times, we would then in turn have to have licensed security for a funeral. I don't feel that that is right to have to go to a grieving family and say, "We have to staff, one for every seventy-five of your grieving friends and family, a licensed security guard," which is that going to make your costs in all of this that much more? I have never been to a funeral where I have ever thought, "Man, we really need licensed So, in closing, I would just like to ask, to ask you to consider this very closely as what it's going to do in these economic times, how it's going to affect our business and our ability to keep our doors open. I don't think that we need to have another vacancy in town. I feel that we are very responsible in what we do, and I would like to have a nice, open relationship with anyone in staff, the police department, anyone who feels that they would like to come and sit down and have a relationship with us. Not strong arms, not set up meetings with ulterior motives, just a relationship. I would like to depend on the police department and the City of Galt and have you depend on me to run a nice, responsible business. Thank you.
Thank you.
Garrett Rig.
I own a, a new business that just started five months ago, uh, the Galt Sun Center, where we have the VIP Event Center. It's over on Enterprise Court in the new business park. I came here with my partner because we were enticed by the business-friendly climate of the city, and, uh, after I'd been open for two months, I got a letter from the, uh, city attorney, I think, saying that, uh, suddenly we're doing something that wasn't planned, and we need to comply with a, what was billed as a new permit system. I found out it was five years old and had never been enforced. And it was very burdensome, so I'm, in some sense, grateful that we have a revised one, which is much better. I, I understand licensing. It makes sense. I'm not arguing with the basic concept of licensing. What we have here, though, is a huge amount of overregulation. Licensing tells you who's having events, what their floor plan is, where their exits are, that they've got all their approvals with fire departments and so on. That's great. Let the police department know exactly how we run. But don't tell us, for every single event of any kind, of any length, that we have to have exactly seventy-five people for every one guard. That's ridiculous. A one- or two-hour event, you could use many fewer guards, because people aren't going to get drunk, frankly, that fast. For a six-hour event, you might need a lot more guards. And as Mr. Henke pointed out, a licensed guard who's from out of town or who hasn't been there before is, is helpful, but not nearly as valuable as one of your own staff that knows where all the controls are, knows where people congregate, knows the neighborhood, knows the crowd. So, I'm suggesting you take the seventy-five figure and make it two hundred. Mr. Henke suggested two and a quarter. I don't know where he got that, but a round figure. Give us a break. Maybe even say that we would match the security guards with an equal number of staff who have been oriented and trained to assist with security. In other words, make a realistic minimum. Let us figure out the fine gradations. Don't run the business. For example, also, it says in the new revised one, probably in the earlier one, that if there's underage people there when we're having drinking, as there would be, like, in a quinceana very often, we have to take all reasonable steps, including, but not limited to. So, we have to do all the things listed, including monitoring the conduct of the, uh, younger kids. I don't know what monitoring means exactly. We have to walk around every five minutes or every hour and see what every little group is talking about, what they're doing out in the parking lot, in the restrooms. I'm not sure. Take that out. That's just micromanaging. Give us a broad principle. Uh, the other thing is, I just, I don't believe in, in the basic statute beyond a simple license, saying you can take away, you have plenty of ways to take our, our rights away and our, our business away. If we're committing a nuisance, you've got state law. You don't have to have the system where we have to appeal to the city manager and then to the city council. It's a whole nother layer. And the detail here, we have to conspicuously post our sign. What if we forget to conspicuously post it? Are we going to lose our license to have these, these assemblies? Why should we post it at all? The city knows we've got a license. We're telling them forty-eight hours ahead of any event. The public doesn't know or care what's on the license. And again, why do we have to attach it to, to every lease? It's our responsibility to comply with it. You know, I don't want to be caught in a bunch of paperwork mistakes. Every time I hire a new manager, I don't want to worry about one more set of government controls that we have to abide by. It's enough to have OSHA, unemployment, every kind of wage situation. We've got to be careful. You know, we've got to get payroll taxes in every week or two. It's hard for new business. We don't need this detail. Just give us a general license and a maximum reasonable amount or minimum amount of guards, not the ideal number. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all the speakers. Oh. Let's hold back.
Any other comments, Mr. Ruff?
Um, Mr. Mayor, before you deliberate, I just want to point out a couple of things. One is, the security guards are only required for events where alcohol is going to be served or consumed. Any events, even in a licensed hall, that are not going to involve alcohol do not require security guards. And the, the particular section of this ordinance that addresses security guards, um, requires security guards that are employed by a private patrol operator. And I thought maybe, Chief, if you could come up and, and discuss that, that nuance and why, from your perspective, that's, that's an important criteria.
The proposal that we emailed to my attorney yesterday, how does that figure out of it?
Yeah, what's that?
Is there a recomp? Is the state the same?
The state is the same. How does it figure it out of it? Do you want to read it?
No. I, I, I sent that proposal to your attorney and asked him whether or not that would, uh, that would satisfy your business, and I never got a response. So, the, um, no, he did not. And so, the ordinance that's before the council this evening, uh, the recommendation is to have a security guard that is employed by a private patrol operator.
I'm sorry. I didn't get to address that in my five minutes. Sure, I have less over. That, that was a huge deal, because I think that if my surprise security company or a company with licensed security guards, there is no, no real legal difference.
Okay. Chief?
Please.
Yeah. My, my wish is that we use a licensed, uh, security company, is so that the police department can get a relationship with the company that allows for us to, um, make sure that if things start to get out of hand, we, we get an early call, we, we have someone to work with to ensure that, um, if minors are in possession of alcohol, something is, hold on, something is, um, is something needs to be done, it will be done, and that it isn't somebody that has a business relationship, particularly with the company or the owners of the, of the, um, of the hall, but a relationship that's more neutral so that if they decide, "Hey, look, this party needs to be shut down," they're not, um, worried about the outcome of doing that. That, that's why I thought this was the better way to go.
Thank you. Counsel, comments?
I have comments. I think those of you who know me know that I am pro-business, um, as much as anybody. But I would have to also say that there are times when businesses require regulation. And it's been real apparent with the economic situation that we're going through now, for example, that the banking industry and that whole group of financial people needed better regulation than they had in enforcement of it. So, now, we're suffering. I would say that there are times when, as, uh, businesses, we have to be responsible to the community. And if that means maybe you're giving up some of your, your freedom for the freedom of others, then that's the price that you pay, whether it's getting a license to drive a car, uh, you're restricted from drinking and driving because you're responsible to the whole community. I feel like this ordinance is minimum. I feel like we have reached out to the community, and I would think as, uh, as landowners and landlords, that you would have a deep concern for the community, especially the youth, and that you would want to partner with us on this. The other thing, someone mentioned, you have staff members that know where you can turn off lights or alarms or fire escapes. Well, there's no one saying that you, you shouldn't have them there if you want to. You know, we're not prohibiting, we're not even, we're not even suggesting that we would prohibit that. I feel that, uh, I've studied the letters I've gotten from you, sir, from, uh, VIP, uh, letters from, uh, MAD as well. Um, I think it's the main responsibility of this council for public safety. And the message that I've gotten, or I believe I've gotten from the community, is they have a big concern about public safety, especially gangs, um, drugs, and they expect us to do what we can to keep that off the streets. Uh, that's, that's my feeling, that's my personal feeling, but I feel like I've gotten this from the majority of the public. Those are my comments.
Okay. Any other comments?
Yeah, I think I'm going to see it a little differently, and I, and I really put a lot of thought into this, and, and I really thought that, having looked at this, I, I do think we, we did try to go and work with the, the groups. We met with them. I think, uh, Steve, I think you did an excellent job in, in working, communicating, and, and trying to come to a, uh, uh, come to the table, uh, in, in all fairness. But the more and more I, I've gotten to think about this, and I look at some of the other laws and ordinances that are passed, and we had talked about measure R not too long ago, about the specifics and what the intent and what the promise was. And, uh, I look at other ordinances and policies that were intended, that there were good intentions, and more and more, I see more and more layers of government that become more and more ineffective than anything. And it really does concern me, and I am really become more and more a constitutionist, and I'm starting to understand more and more the value of it. I, I'm not going to support this tonight. Not that I don't think that it has some value to it. I do. I think we, there's other ways we may be able to reach out, or we can reach out and work something out with these groups. I just don't want to put any more burden on these businesses or, uh, these groups that may prevent them from having any more business, but most importantly, I do not want to take away their, their rights, their constitutional rights. And I do have concerns that that's what we would be doing.
Okay. Any other comments, Mayor Ruff?
Um, you know, the prob, if it comes down to the bottom line of just security guards where alcohol is being served, I really don't have a problem with that. The one thing I don't understand is part, it, and I had talked to the chief about this, and that is that, um, let me see if I've gotten this right. You can say, "You're not serving alcohol if you have a caterer come in that's serving alcohol," and they get a one-day permit, and, um, so they kind of slide underneath it by saying that they're not serving alcohol, the caterer is. Did I get that right, or no? Wait.
Let the chief come up and respond, please.
There is no alcohol license requirement, notification in advance for caterer permits when there is no gate at the door. So, there is no way that I would know anything about that, and there is no control other than caterer leaving off the alcohol when there's no sales at the door to gain admission.
Um, does someone have to have an alcohol permit to have one of these assembly halls? Like, I know whenever we have an event, we have to go up and get the permit to serve alcohol or to have alcohol on the premises.
The owner of the, of the buildings don't have to have a permit. If the caterer is going to bring alcohol, they have to have a permit. But again, that permit is not reviewed, there's no restrictions, um, there's no, no oversight after the caterer drives off the alcohol unless there's a fee charged at the door of the business. So, there is no oversight in those cases.
So, how do we, if a person is planning at an event, you know, I just, I really, I'm concerned about the alcohol and the safety of, of the public. Um, how, how are we made aware of the fact, or are we made aware of the fact that alcohol is going to be served at some of these events?
Well, when there's no charge at the door, we're, unless the business calls and says we're doing an event, we don't know about it.
Okay.
Currently, that's one of the things that this ordinance would allow us to have, is be able to know when those events are taking place. There's a notification requirement in the ordinance, so that if they are having an event without alcohol, they have to go by the, the police department.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I think everyone knows how I feel with public safety, and I believe that we, the, the city, uh, the elected officials and staff have went forth. Uh, we had a meeting. Not everyone agreed with what we discussed. It was heated at times, and then we ended up shaking hands and walking away and saying, "I agree with part of it and I disagree with the other part." But I believe that we need an oversight, and for public safety, I believe that this is something we need to do. So, if there's any further discussion, fine. Staff, all, this, I'll entertain a motion.
I would move that we, um, approve the recommendation on this ordinance. Now, is this going to have to have, like, a public hearing or?
Um, this is a, uh, this is, requires two, uh, two times to the city council, so the recommendation this evening is to introduce the ordinance, waive further reading, and continue it to the next regular meeting. So, if that passes this evening, then we come back on October nineteenth for adoption.
Okay. And then that is my motion. I second.
Motion's been made and seconded. No further discussion? Any further discussion? None? We'll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Haynes?
No.
Councilmember Powers?
Aye.
Mayor Shelton?
Aye. Okay. Thank you, everyone. And our next item, if you could read that off this.
Introduce an ordinance adding chapter two point one zero of the Galt Municipal Code regarding temporary street closures, waive further reading of the ordinance, and continue the matter to the next regular meeting.
Uh, Mayor, Councilmembers, the, uh, vehicle code authorizes, uh, local authorities to adopt rules and regulations.
Excuse me, uh, ladies and gentlemen, we just have agenda items. If you could kind of keep it down, please. Thank you. We'll just wait for you to, just a minute, Steve, sorry. Just waiting for them to exit. Being disrespectful to you, sir, and I cut you off. Go ahead. Thank you.
Uh, the vehicle code authorizes local authorities to adopt rules and regulations for temporarily.
for temporarily closing a portion of a street for celebrations, parades, local events. And I think the practice in the, in the community has been for these, uh, items, sometimes minor items, to come to the city council. So, uh, what the, uh, the ordinance before you does is it sets up a, a mechanism for people that, uh, feel there's a need to close a public street, to make an application, uh, to the city manager or his or her designee to have that application reviewed and acted upon. In the event that they're dissatisfied with the, uh, the outcome of that process, they obviously have a right to appeal to the city council. There's also a mechanism, uh, in this ordinance for the city manager or his or her designee, uh, on their own initiative to restrict the use of a, a street for a, a public purpose. The best example of that would be, uh, as it relates to, uh, public construction projects. So if, uh, the public works director felt there was a need to close public streets in connection with public construction, uh, this is something that can be handled at staff level without, uh, city council action. So that is the, uh, the recommended ordinance, and I'd be happy to, uh, answer any questions.
I have no questions.
Okay, this would not include what we're currently doing with, you know, we allow for, like, parades, uh, homecoming, since we have two high schools?
Um, it would, it would include, uh, would include those types of, uh, events. I think that, um, yes, it, it would include those events.
What does it take now to close one of the streets? I mean, what are we, help me out here?
Um, well, typically, it would, uh, it would require an act, an item to come before the city council, uh, for authorization to, to close the public street. And sometimes it's, it's for something, it might be a something as innocuous as a block party, and I think even though there's no provision under, uh, under our statutes right now, I think that some of those have probably been handled in the past administratively. But technically, a block party closure would have to come to the city council, parades would come to the city council, um, but this would move it down to, uh, to staff level, which there's rare, usually there's not much discussion on it, and, and we feel that, uh, in most cases, this will make for a more efficient, uh, process, not only for members of the community, but also for, uh, city staff as we try to, uh, undertake public construction projects.
Okay, and I just read the appeal process to the chair in there. I was jumping ahead. Okay, all right. Uh, any further questions or comments? If not?
No, I move to approve the recommendation.
Okay, and seconded. And we'll call vote.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Haynes?
Councilmember Powers?
Aye.
Mayor Shelton?
Aye.
Okay, we have three votes. Okay.
Sorry.
On stage, guys, I thought it was me, but thank you.
Okay, I'll read the next item. I'm afraid to touch my mic. Um, under Community Development Department request for a certificate of appropriateness to demolish the structure at 218 Fifth Street.
Nice introduction.
I bet the guys in the van are.
And Kirk, go ahead.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the audience, uh, members of the council. Uh, the item for you is, uh, a request for a certificate of appropriateness to allow the demolition of, of a structure located at, um, 218 Fifth Street. Uh, in early September, staff received a request, uh, there's a letter in the packet from a representative of property owner Spawns Cookie Company to have this, uh, particular structure demolished. There is a procedure set forth in the specific plan covering the, um, downtown area that prior to a historic structure being demolished, a certificate of appropriateness is required to be, uh, secured. As part of this review, uh, staff, uh, including myself, the building inspector, and the property owner, uh, property owner's representative, uh, LT, uh, was at the, uh, property in, oh, early, mid-September to go through the property and take a look at it. As part of your report, you have an existing conditions report prepared by the building inspector. It's very comprehensive. You also have photographs depicting the condition, both the interior as well as the exterior of the structure. I think the pictures probably say more than what you can say in, in a written report. Uh, but, uh, for the benefit of the audience and others, um, in looking at this structure, and it, it, I don't have the exact age, but, uh, the last time it was evaluated was in 1989. At that time, it was classified as an extreme, in, in poor condition. Um, nothing has improved that condition over the last twenty-plus years. There's been, been no rehabilitative work done, and it is now at a point of being extremely poor condition, or even classified as hazardous. Um, in looking at it generally, uh, in looking at some of the photographs, and after evaluating it, you can see that there's about a one and a half foot, uh, sag along the ridge line. Uh, the south-facing wall, uh, sags about a foot and a half. That's because there is no cripple wall and actually no foundation. The four joists are sitting on the ground. Um, the south-facing wall is supported from falling outward by a two-by-eight piece of wood approximately twelve feet long that has a latch around it and then secured to one of the jail cells, metal jail cells inside. Otherwise, more than likely, the south wall's gonna fall off, uh, if that rope is, is somehow disconnected. Um, the top plates, where the rafters, or where the joists, uh, meet the top plate which hold the building together, uh, many of those are dislocated by six inches or more and are three to four inches below the top plate, so there is no connection. Uh, many of the rafters are disconnecting, uh, and are showing uplift because of the sag in the roof pushing the building outward, and, uh, ultimately, it will collapse. What is hold, what appears to be holding the building together now are three posts which have been wedged under the ceiling joists to hold those in place. They are not secured, they're simply wedged in there. Uh, most of the, uh, one-by-four material that constituted what was the ceiling, uh, has all disconnected from the rafters, and, uh, the floor is also in a degenerative state, and this is mainly through the number of, uh, roof penetrations that allowing for moisture, rain, uh, to enter the building. Um, the, uh, as noted in the existing conditions report, um, the building is, um, in such a condition that, one, uh, it would be deemed dangerous to try and even rehabilitate it if you could, and secondly, um, because of the cost, it, it does not appear that it would even be , uh, cost-effective to do so. Um, the, in order to issue a certificate of appropriateness, the city council would have to make a finding that the, uh, building is a, is a hazard to public health and safety. I believe the existing condition report would easily substantiate that finding. Um, additionally, the, uh, Historic Preservation Committee reviewed the same reports before you tonight on September 13th. Um, they questioned myself, the building inspector, as well as the property owner, and came to the unanimous conclusion that, yes, it is, uh, a hazardous building, and it should be demolished, and the certificate of appropriateness should be approved by the city council. You have a resolution attached which would, um, authorize the property owner approve the certificate of appropriateness and authorize the blocking of a certificate of exemption pursuant to CQ. Uh, you have the, uh, agenda for the, uh, Historic Preservation Committee as well as their staff report, uh, and the letter from the property owner. That concludes my report. Unless there are any questions by council.
I don't think it's in the pictures, Kirk.
Uh, John took the pictures.
Any further comments?
The property, there's a representative from the property owner in the audience, if he may have, if you'd like to speak to him, or if you have any questions.
No.
Is there any comment you wanted to add?
I mean, like I said in my.
Well, you can come up to the podium if you'd like, please. Thank you. I wasn't trying to put you on the spot, but if you wanted to speak, thanks.
My name's Lauren Thompson, and I'm a representative of Spawns Cookie Company, and we are the property owners of the old jail. And it has been our intent, uh, it's always been my father-in-law's intent to restore and, and, uh, preserve the history of golf, and he's done a very good job in the Old Town District. Um, this particular property is beyond repair. Um, uh, to, and it's our estimation that it could cause a liability to the bakery. Uh, we've got people that have gotten into the building, and it's very unsafe. And I continually go in over there and trying to make sure they can't get into it. Um, I'm just worried that it's gonna fall down on somebody, and, uh, I definitely don't want that to happen. And, uh, what we have agreed to with the Historical Society was to take the jail cells out, put them into our courtyard with a plaque that commemorates where the jail used to stand. Um, that was something that was brought up in our historical review, and something that we've always wanted to do. But the building is, is too far gone for us to do anything to save it.
All right. Thank you. Counsel, any further discussion? Or ascertain a motion?
Move to, um, approve the recommendation. Is that enough? Or do I need to read the whole thing?
One second.
Okay, just not.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, we have a first and a second. Uh, we'll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Haynes?
Aye.
Councilmember Powers?
Aye.
Mayor Shelton?
Aye.
Next item is finance.
Fiscal year 2009, 2010, pre-audit budget update.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I've been making the report this evening. I wanted to thank, uh, Finance Director, her staff for putting this report together. It provides a lot of details as far as where we are as the city financially. One of the commitments, uh, we made to the city council over a year ago was to provide timely information as the budget situation in the city, uh, changes fairly rapidly, and things were deteriorating. We said we, we're gonna be no surprises that we continue to keep the council and the community advised and informed about the, the current financial condition of the city and the community. And so that's our intent tonight, is to go over the year-end report, uh, of the last fiscal year, ending June 30th, 2010. Uh, next month, we will also have the first quarter of the current fiscal year report to the city council. But this report tonight is to do an assessment, a review, on, on how well we finished the last fiscal year, how close we were to the budget estimates that we presented to the council back in the beginning of June, uh, to see, uh, whether, for any further adjustments are, are necessary. And we highlighted the key issues that we felt the council would need to know about, and the community would need to know about, particularly highlighting some of the city's major funds, like the general fund and the culture and recreation fund, and some of the other things, and highlighted some of the, the variances that we've seen through the budget process. So, I'll go over briefly some of the highlight issues, and if the council or any members of the public have any specific questions, we'd be happy to answer those at the end of the, the report. Um, speaking of, obviously, the most important, uh, fund in the city that funds most of our general operations, including our police department, is, uh, the general fund. For the, uh, last fiscal year, we ended the budget down just a, a little bit, uh, from our budget estimates. Uh, we were up in several categories, which I'll go into in a second. One of the big, uh, reasons that we were, um, lower than anticipated in revenues, and the, we were down by about forty-one thousand dollars, uh, which is, which is really a small amount in consideration of the entire general fund budget. But, in any event, we were down, um, slightly, and we were expecting to get into a, uh, soil vapor extraction project this last year, and there was gonna be grant fundings from the state to help cover those costs. And that project, uh, was delayed somewhat and didn't occur until this fiscal year, and so those revenues that we were expecting to receive didn't come forth. But also, there were the expenditures that weren't, weren't, um, accrued at that point, and so really offset each other. Um, on the expenditure side, we did have significant savings from each of our, uh, operating departments. Um, the total amount that we saw citywide, when, when we take out the, uh, the remaining commitments and encumbrances that we had, was about a hundred and four thousand dollars, uh, savings, uh, over what we estimated in the budget. So those two taken together, uh, the city netted about sixty-three thousand dollars more than what we budgeted in our general fund, which is positive. The, um, in actuality, uh, we ended up with a little bit more than that, partly because the, uh, culture and recreation fund ended higher than we, what we expected. On the culture and recreation side, which, as the council knows, um, the majority of those revenues come from the city's operation of the Gulf Market, as well as recreation revenues we receive from various programs. Revenues in that were up by about, almost fifty thousand dollars from where we projected in our expenditures. There were savings in the amount of about eighty-one thousand dollars. So those taken combined, we had, uh, we were, we ended the year about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars better off than what we projected in the culture and recreation fund. And because we were, um, expecting to subsidize or take money from the general fund to balance out the culture and recreation fund, because the culture and recreation fund finished a little bit higher than we thought, we didn't have to transfer those funds then over into the culture and recreation fund. So, the net impact to the general fund was about a hundred and, almost a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the good, higher than what we originally projected. So that's positive news, uh, for the community, certainly much better than doing the other way. Um, and as we've always indicated to the council, um, finance staff in particular tried to be very conservative in its, in its budget estimates, and this, this year was no different. We did end up the year, like I said, a little bit better than what we projected. And so part of it is due to conservative estimates, and part of it is due to our staff's dedication to finding ways to save money and reducing costs wherever we can. We saw a lot of savings on the expenditure side. Let me just go through quickly the, the major, um, areas that we saw in the budget, things that people always ask about, property tax, sales tax, how we finished on those. Property tax, we were, uh, up more than what we budgeted, uh, by about fifty-two thousand dollars. It's still a decrease over the prior year by about sixteen percent, so, uh, property taxes continue to go down. But, again, we were overly conservative in our, in our budget estimates, and that's a good thing. Uh, we try to be conservative as we can. Sales tax, another one where we were, we ended up a little bit better than what we projected by about thirty-two, thirty-one thousand dollars. Again, this, even though we were up compared to our estimates, we were down compared to the previous year by about four percent. Uh, interest income is another one where we ended up faring a little bit better than what we projected. We were up by about sixty-four thousand dollars. Um, on the downside, I already mentioned the soil vapor extraction project, that we didn't receive the revenues for that as a reimbursement. There are also a couple of grants that we didn't receive in the, at the, in the time that we expected to receive them. And so some of those are just received a little bit later than what we originally projected. On the expenditure side, uh, we, we saw savings in a lot of different areas. We saw savings from some vacant and frozen positions that we were able to, to see savings from. We had operating budget savings, and I already mentioned on the revenue side, we have the, um, soil vapor extraction from the underground tank savings, uh, we had, on the revenue side was down. We also had the expenditure savings on that. As far as our other funds, there were, um, not a whole lot of differences from where we budgeted. We were pretty close on most of our other revenue sources, as indicated in the report. There are a few minor variations, but nothing of real significance. The big one that we were up on was the market revenue. We were up about forty-seven, uh, fifty-seven thousand dollars on the market revenue. Uh, another big one, or significant that we saw an increase in was Measure R. We came in a little bit higher than what we projected on the revenues, not as much as we projected a couple of years ago when we first passed the Measure R, uh, ordinance, but, uh, we ended the year with revenues of seven-hundred-and-thirteen thousand dollars for Measure R, which is, which is significant. Um, there are, there are not really any other significant deviations from the budget noted in the report. Staff does continue to monitor, uh, where we need to and where we need to make adjustments. We will continue to bring those items back to the city council. Kind of anxious to see where we, where we stand after the first quarter of the current fiscal year. We'll have that report back to the council in November, is the current plan, and then continue to have quarterly reports after that until we end up with next year's budget. Uh, staff continues to look for opportunities and ways to save. What we have seen, it looks like, um, is somewhat of a stabilization on some of our revenue sources, sales tax, property tax, things like that, that we think we're, um, I shouldn't knock on wood a little bit and say, and hit the bottom on some of these things, and we're starting to see slight creep up, especially on sales tax and so forth. So, we're hoping that, that tells us a little bit that the economy is at least not heading much further down, and there's some stabilization. We can see, you know, in the next year or two, some real positive growth, but we're not planning on it at this point. We always plan for, uh, you know, worst case, and what we think might, uh, the city might experience, so that we're protected and we can, we can preserve the city's reserves into the future, so that if things do get worse, we're prepared for it. And so I think, uh, staff has done an excellent job, uh, especially our finance staff and all of our operating departments, and watching the budgets closely, make sure we stay on target with the direction provided by our city council. So, having said that, uh, that concludes my report. Happy to answer any questions for the council. There's no action required, just this informational report only to the city council.
Counsel, any questions or comments?
Comments? Um, first of all, I wanted to, uh, say how important it is during these economic times that we do stay on top of exactly where our position is, and I- that we do stay on top of exactly where our position is and I want to thank the city manager and the staff for doing this extra work to keep us informed. Uh, in reading this report, I had many questions and thank you, Inez, for spending some time with me. Uh, but mainly I was concerned because I was seeing we were staying pretty close to what we budgeted, but we were down as compared to the previous fiscal year. So, my concern was if this continues, are we going to be okay? And one of the things that was reassuring to me is that we still have our reserves and we haven't had to get into those reserves, uh, which is one of our goals. Uh, I think we're vulnerable, of course, from what the state might do to us, uh, which could cause us to dip into our reserves, but hopefully that's not going to happen. Uh, but we ever can be absolutely sure that that won't happen. Um, the other thing I was concerned about, uh, most of our savings seems like they've come from cutbacks in staff and I'm wondering if we can sustain our services as we continue to operate with less people. I have to say that the staff has, uh, risen valiantly to the situation and I have not heard complaints from the citizens. In fact, some of them haven't even realized that we're closed on Friday, that the city hall is closed on Friday. So evidently, um, we are doing a good job with fewer people and I know they're working harder and that needs to be recognized just to make, keep us, uh, secure and able to sustain the city possibly for the next couple of years. So, my hope is that the state will leave us alone so we can continue to operate. But I felt like the, uh, report, uh, was very detailed. Our finance department did a great job in being conservative both in their revenues as, and maybe, uh, predicting expenditures to be more, but in all cases, uh, they did a great job and I feel, feel pretty good, believe it or not, considering the situation that we have throughout the state. Thank you.
If I can just add a comment, um, when I did speak with Councilmember Payne this afternoon, one of the, or two of the things that we did touch on were that the reserves that, um, in spite of actually tapping into some of our reserves, that all of our reserves are still currently fully funded. So that was an important aspect that even going forward after the fiscal year ended, into the new fiscal year, that one of the directions, um, that council made of, of city staff was that we wanted to ensure that, um, reserves were fully funded and, um, do the best that we could to avoid the layoffs. So going into the current fiscal year, we did achieve those, so I just wanted to reiterate that the reserves are fully funded for fiscal year ending June two thousand and ten. And, um, the other item that Councilmember Payne did mention was that at this point, the current year budget fiscal year ending June two thousand and eleven does not include any state takeaway. So we're watching, um, actions at the state level right now and that will be part of our report coming back next month, but we still continue to monitor state actions and, and the budget impacts if whatever they're taking and the impact that they could have to our budget because anything that they would be taking away from us at this point would come from our reserves. So just wanted to expand on those two items.
Let me just make another comment about what, one of the things that Vice Mayor Payne indicated was the, the concern about staffing. It's a concern that I share and something that we have, uh, we've, uh, frozen many positions in the city, I think about fourteen at current count, which represents a little over ten percent of the city's workforce. We've had, we have furlough days, and so there's fewer days in which our staff has to perform the work necessary. Workload hasn't gone down. We've tried to maintain staffing levels in the really core, key, critical departments in, in the city, um, police being the one that has been least affected by, uh, the, the city's cuts, but, um, you know, I have concerns as we go forward that if we have to make further cuts, it's going to really cripple the city and its ability to deliver those services to the community even now, uh, even though we're doing our best to hold things together and move forward with those services. Um, if it continues too long, we're going to probably have to, um, re-evaluate and rethink how we do some of these things and kind of reprioritize what the, what those issues are in the city, where we want to deliver those core services and other areas we may have to start cutting back in, um, unless the revenue picture in the city improves.
Um, I think you did an excellent job and I'm really pleased with the fact that we're on budget and we're, you know, our expectations are better than what we antec- anticipated. Um, I think the next few years are the most critical when it comes to the, uh, our reserves. Uh, I think some of the contingencies that we can't see right now is what will happen after the next election and I'm really worried about that and the economy as a whole. So, I'm hoping that we can still hold our own and, and it, but I am very pleased with the fact that where we see other cities making major layoffs and major furloughs and all the other, uh, cuts that they've had to make, that we have not been affected as much as the others and I hope that continues. So, uh, I'm very pleased with the job you guys have done. You've done an excellent job on this. Thank you.
Good job, everyone.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll move to the next item. Communications? Oh, was it? I'm sorry, I thought you were calling something out for communications. Okay. We'll adjourn and to the redevelopment agency, if I could have the roll call, please.
Court Member Payne?
Here.
Powers?
Here.
Shatton?
Here. Other comment?
There's no speakers.
Would you read off the consent items, please? Congratulations?
Where are the five?
Sorry. I'm going to do it.
Okay, we have three items. The first one, approval of the minutes of the meeting of September twenty-eighth, two thousand and ten. The second, approval of the redevelopment agency warrants and the third, approval of the treasures report for the period ending August two thousand and ten.
Okay. Any comments or questions from council?
No comments.
Not? Is there a motion?
No moves.
Second?
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? None? Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Haynes?
Aye.
Councilmember Powers?
Aye.
Mayor Shatton?
Aye.
We'll adjourn and reconvene to the Galt City Council. And city clerks report?
Just a couple of things tonight. Before you is an appointment to the Architectural Review Committee, uh, which is an appointment made by the mayor with the consensus of council. We do have vacancy, uh, of a planning commissioner due to the resignation of, uh, back then Commissioner Powers. And we, uh, I had the planning department contact the planning commission. We do have three people that are interested, uh, Sherri Daly, Jean Davenport, and Leanne McFadden. And this would just be an interim appointment, uh, we, the appointment would be up in, beginning of January, end of December, beginning of January. We, we would come back to you for another appointment.
Is this due because we, we need to have a meeting? Is that what this means?
And there's a meeting, I think, on Thursday or tomorrow?
Oh, it's tomorrow? Oh, okay.
Or Thursday.
Wednesday or Thursday? It's this week, though.
Thursday, it's Thursday.
They're, they're not regular meetings.
No, they are not regular meetings.
No, are, are they all res- I'm sorry, am I? Are they, are they available, are all three of them available tomorrow for the meeting?
I believe it's Thursday. It's Thursday.
And I think they know about the meeting on Thursday and, and they've all expressed an interest in serving in this three-month period.
Okay, it's a short term and, uh, I hope that the, my council members concur with me, but I would pick Leanne McFadden. She is one of our senior planners and I don't mean to call her a senior, but it is temporary, you know, for, for this one meeting. Doesn't mean that the individual will hold that position. I mean, we have new council members coming on, so.
I think they're all very good candidates.
They are.
Excellent candidates and, uh, I have no problem with Leanne. I think she's wonderful, very sharp, she knows what's going on. Some stuff I didn't pick up where Mary Lou left off.
Okay.
I agree, they're all, having worked with all three of them, that's three very credible people.
Was that unanimous?
Sounds like one to me.
Okay.
I have a couple, couple other things. Uh, I wanted to, we had our groundbreaking for the Central Galt Interchange Project to, this afternoon. I wanted to thank Parks and Rec for helping us set up, helping us carry everything over. Um, Public Works was a great help and with, without them, we wouldn't have been out there. So I wanted to thank everybody for that. It was a big success and we had hot dog barbecue, thanks to Armando Solis for cooking. So, and just a couple reminders, uh, the Parks and Rec Commission will be meeting October thirteenth at seven PM here in the council chambers. On October fourteenth, the planning commission will be meeting at six-thirty here in the council chambers. We have our next council meeting on October nineteenth. And also a reminder of a public meeting on October twenty-eighth. Um, it's an informational meeting regarding the Galt Interchange Project. It will be at the Police Community Room, the Pachetti Room, four fifty-five industrial, starting at six PM. I think, did I cover out everything? Great, okay. That's all I had, thank you.
Okay. Comments by staff?
Police Chief has a comment he'd like to make.
Sure.
Another comment. Um, this is really good news. Um, we were notified by the Department of Homeland Security this week that, uh, Galt Police Department's received a grant, will get two officers fully staffed for three years.
Very nice.
Yeah. We're really pleased. We didn't get our request last year and I kind of thought it, we were never going to hear again from these folks, but, um, Sacramento County in general, the whole county did really well. The sheriff got fifty, um, fifty deputies, um, Elk Grove got six officers, both of them got three and we got two. Um, so we're really, really pleased and, um, this will be a lot of help for us, so.
That's fantastic.
That is the greatest.
Good timing, excellent. Thank you.
Chief, thanks for staying on top of that. I didn't see that got in. That was aw- awesome.
Okay. Any other comments by staff? Vice Mayor Payne?
Um, first of all, I didn't mean, I meant to bring this up during the discussion about the budget, but, uh, staff put together this budget in brief, um, that's a lot easier to understand than the million of words that was in our report and it's on our webpage. So the public, uh, can go and take a look at it and understand it or if not, they can have some questions. But again, it's a really nice, nice job. Uh, the other thing I'm going to mention, that I went to Sacramento Mayor, Kevin Johnson's, um, um, I don't know, whatever you call it, meeting on Greenwise and Thomas Friedman was the speaker and he was very dynamic. He's a big supporter of the whole green initiative and I went there to try to understand it because I'm on two air quality boards and climate change and, you know, I have to vote on policies, so, um, I thought I should learn something. But, um, Thomas Friedman didn't get into debate whether or not there's a real global warming. He just says we need to do something, so I didn't learn anything there. And so someone asked him the question, "Well, you're saying that the jobs, the economy will get better with the new jobs that are created by the green movement." I'm going to call it movement because I don't understand it. And, uh, so someone asked him, "Well, what are some of those jobs?" And he, he didn't, he couldn't tell me any. Uh, so I don't know that I'm, I'm any more qualified to, uh, go to the air quality and climate change boards than I was before, but I did try to get better informed. Um, and like I said, Thomas Friedman is a dynamic speaker. He's a Pulitzer Prize winner and I think he's going to follow up with more information. So maybe I'll try that and learn something. Um, that's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Haynes?
Yeah, I'm good. I'll leave it to Mary Lou.
I just wanted to say that it was a very nice groundbreaking today and it was a long time coming. There were a lot of people to thank for that, staff, council, president, council, and, uh, I think that you all worked really hard for it and, uh, it was a really nice night today.
I'll restate that. Thanks to Congressman Dan Lundgren and all the staff. I think as I said out there earlier, and the community, because the community was in heavily involved in the design and numerous people and I'm sure that while I went through that list that you guys gave me of announcing, that I'm sure that I missed two or three people, so. I do have one thing, uh, National Fire Prevention Week, since you guys, everyone knows I'm in the fire service, is always on the first week of October, so it's October the third through the ninth. The theme and campaign this year is smoke alarms, it's sound you can live with. And I want to give you some stats. Over two thousand and eight, there were over twenty-seven hundred fire deaths, thirteen thousand plus injuries due to fires in two thousand and eight. The stats show that two out of every residential dwellings did not have a smoke detector or it had been disconnected. So if you have smoke detectors, battery operated, are now required for several years to be electrically and battery backup, is to test those, please, especially if you have children, senior citizens. So it's, it's a very push. You want any more information, contact your local fire department. I think the chief here was going to say something. Earlier she was here, I could tell that she'd gotten a call because she'd picked up her radio on her pager and went out the door, so. Normally she does say something like that. Other than that, I hope everyone has a great week and, golly, we're getting out of here adjourned at eight forty-six.